We're gonna call this codes meeting the order. Um.
Well, I was just drinking coffee. I'm fully vaccinated, are you?
Looking at ordinance number three. In ordinance amending section two eighteen forty-eight point five, exceptions by the addition of paragraph C one and two, prohibiting vehicle traffic in and around Valley View Golf Course via Master Garden Road and Steel Road on Sundays between April fifteenth and October thirty-first. Um, we've all read this resolution in the last meeting. This is just with the legalese, um, and I guess in proper form. I'll read the, um, exceptions. Um, A, streets open to regular vehicular traffic are exempt from the prohibitions on outdoor smoking, um, emanating from an adjacent area except that such prohibition shall extend into the parking lane of such a street and two persons in or on a vehicle in an affected parking area on public property such as near a school or playground same, B, Valley View Golf Course and Clubhouse located near the corner of the Parkway and Valley View Road. Same C, Valley View Golf Course, Master Garden Road and Steel Road, um, and then the descriptions with one and two. So I'll, I'll open up for a council member, Celeste Friend, to kinda give the logic behind this change, the work that she's done. I'll give the space for the council to respond to that, um, introduction, and then turn it back into her hands for, and invite the guests that she has invite, um, up to the council for their comments and remarks to the committee. Councilperson Friend.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to invite Phil Bean to come and join us, um, up here.
I just have a quick question. I have ordinance four in my paperwork. We have ordinance three for our common council meeting. Do we have an updated copy?
The updated copy's in the pre-meeting packet. Do you have your printout of the pre-meeting packet?
Pre-meeting?
Yeah, the updated copy's in the pre-meeting.
Alright.
Cause that's where it's being, you know, you're presenting.
Alright, I don't, I'm in the same position as you. Um, I don't have much to look for there. So this is the version that the, that the, um...
This is the verge, the version that the judge wrote up for us since the last meeting? No. You can sit at the table.
Yes, sir.
He's speaking after, uh, they, they kinda lay off.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Okay, sorry, I'm looking for my notes. I might have to be opening up my computer in a moment here. So I'll tell you the basic story of this legislation is, last year, uh, last summer, uh, lots of my constituents started complaining to me about what it was like to walk into Roscoe Conkling from on Oneida Street. Um. So, uh, that's when this all began, and the concern was that, um... The concern was that because that road, if you, if you can picture that road, if you can picture Oneida Street, um, as where, where Master Garden Road intersects with Oneida, when those gates are open and people are using that road to walk up into Roscoe Conkling, and then cars are driving on it, it becomes a very unsafe situation. It's a pretty narrow road that has no sidewalks, and in which the, the road sort of immediately, it has no shoulder. Um, it drops off into a ditch, and at the top of that hill, there are sort of two blind corners, one after another. So people started talking to me about what it was like to try to enter the car, the park on foot. Um, so, and then also, I had been meeting separately, for other reasons, with the New Forest Cemetery, and the new superintendent, Jeremy, who's the superintendent of New Forest Cemetery, and who's up there by the, um, by the pithiest monument at the very top there of New Forest, also reported that there was lots of, uh, lots of traffic and lots of it going very fast. So I asked, uh, Chief, I talked to Deputy Chief Noonan, um, about this. The, the thing to, to keep in mind about Roscoe Conkling Park, and, uh, Phil is gonna talk about this, I think, or he may talk about this, is that the only access to that park is on roads that cars drive on. There are no footpaths in, there are no sidewalks in. The only access to that park is by way of either Master Garden Road on either Oneida or Memorial Parkway, or Steel Hill Road as it comes in off of Valley View. So lots of constituents complained to me about not feeling safe walking up into Roscoe Conkling, and so I started talking to people throughout Utica, and it became clear that lots of people would welcome having one day a week that would be car-free, so that they could more freely enjoy the park. So, um, at the time, back in the fall, I actually asked the police department to do a traffic survey, um, using their speed spies, and they did in about the third week of October. There is quite a bit of traffic, and it goes quite fast. Um, the, the vast majority of cars traveling on Master Garden Road or on Steel Hill Road are speeding. Uh, most of them speed. So, um... So I ran a survey more recently, so that was sort of last October, and then, of course, the roads got, the gates got closed as they normally do in the fall, and I didn't give it much thought over the winter. Um, and then more recently, I did run a monkey, an online survey. Um, I've distributed that through my newsletter, so most people who've taken that survey live in Utica, and I was actually really surprised by how strongly it ran in favor of shutting down, um, the roads to cars one day a week. It's eighty-two percent in favor of, of that, and of the people who are... So I asked basically two questions. Would you like one day a week where the roads were open only to pedestrians, bikers, joggers, bicycles, et cetera? And then, and that ran eighty-two to eighteen, so four to one essentially. And then I asked if the road were closed one day a week to cars, what would be your preferred day? Seventy-five percent of the people prefer that it be on a weekend, and two-thirds of those people, so approximately fifty percent of the total, preferred Sunday. So that's where I came up with the idea of this legislation. Um, so, um, I brought this legislation because people in Utica want recreational opportunities. They wanna be able to access Roscoe Conkling Park, but they wanna do it in a safe way, free from having to worry about sharing the road with cars. Um, I believe that we could easily encourage far more people to use Roscoe Conkling if they knew that they could do so without having to enter the park on a road that cars are also driving on. Uh, people want recreational opportunities. I believe that without too much effort, we could turn Roscoe Conkling into a thriving, active, much beloved destination in the heart of our city. Our Olmsted Parks are an absolute treasure, and we're not utilizing Roscoe Conkling nearly as much as we should, in my opinion. Uh, the park in general is becoming more and more of a recreation destination. We have a zoo, we have a world-class golf course, we have tennis courts, a ski center, um, and soon, there will be a children's museum only a block away, so that whole area is becoming a big recreation zone. And I think that the time is right to see what we can do to let more people enjoy the park, and keeping cars out just one day a week can be a part of that. So that's the basic motivation, uh, for the legislation. So...
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I do want, i- if you're done with the, with your laying out of the introduction?
Yes.
Okay. I do want the council, give, uh, space for the council members who are for or against this to kinda give your discussion questions. That way, we can have an informed vote if councilperson Friend does bring it out.
Could, could we, could we hear from Phil Bean first, just because he came here for this purpose?
Yeah, I would wanna do that after the council people have a chance to speak.
Just, just procedural note, let's, uh, get on the microphones. Thanks. There's our...
First of all, this should've been in the Parks Committee. I don't know why it's in the Codes Committee, first of all. So I let it go two weeks ago, cause I wasn't in the mood to deal with it. That's number one. Number two, you know, we shut down, we shut down the road up in Switchbacks, cause that's a safety thing, and that's where walkers use. The cars have been going up there for over a hundred years, up on Steel Road and Master Garden Road. Alright, and a lot of older people, and a lot of, they go up there, and if they walk their kids, they drive up there. Um, I don't agree with this. It should not be shut down. I'm sure a lot of my fellow council people, and a lot of people I talk to, cause I'm from here, I was raised up there, um, I've been up there since I was a little kid and everything else, high school and everything else. Um, so it's been there for a hundred years, and it's not gonna change, and it shouldn't change. The Switchbacks are for the walkers, and the people that wanna walk, they take their coffee up there, and then they walk. There has not been any, I asked the chief of police, has there anybody, anybody been hit by a car up there? No. I walk up that road many times on Oneida Street, alright? I do. I walk up that Master Garden Road, you know? You could tell what I've done over there, but I don't have to post it online, this is what I do. I don't have to do that. Um, but I'm up there all the time, and I never see no issues. I see a lot of older people getting out of their cars, and they walk. They may walk their little dog. It's not a kid's park. The kid's park is down in Proctor Park. That's an older person's park. Alright, sometimes you see, you know, some kids with their mom and dad and everything pushing strollers. That's fine, you see that too. But they come in and they park. They park down right at the, the foot of the Switchbacks, or they park up the Eagle, or they come down a little farther and they park, and they look over Brinkler Ave. So I don't agree with this. I don't know where this is coming from, and, you know, if some constituents complain about it, then if they wanna walk, they should walk to Thomas R. Proctor, or just walk on Oneida Street or sidewalks. Alright, but we're not gonna, we should not be shutting down, and we should not be omitting anybody from using that park, either disability or whatever. It should not be omitted. This has been going on for a hundred years, and I'm, we're not, you shouldn't be changing stuff now. And, and Phil Bean agrees. I know he agrees with me. Alright, and I know he does, cause we had this talk before...
Sorry to make you come to the meeting in order to...
Well, cause I've had this talk with Phil Bean many times, and he knows I'm big into the parks. Alright, and he knows I'm very big in the parks. But the point is, this should not happen. End of story. That's all I have.
Yes, um, there are another council, uh, councilman, um, Beatrice.
Yes.
Last year, we had a problem, anybody coming off the park, we shut down Steel Road Gate, or off the Parkway. We did that purpose, cause it's, golf carts are going across, they were coming up too fast. That made sense. Alright, that made sense, and that's why it was shut down. It's been shut down for safety reasons. Alright, but people use that, that's, a lot of people go up there and eat their lunch in their car, they go up there, whatever they do. Alright, yeah, and they leave trash. We used to leave trash cans up there, but then they fill them up with their, their personal trash and, and from home, on top of that. So, um, well, that's what I'm telling you. We did the safety part of it with Steel Road there.
Yes, so, uh, I'm gonna go back to what I said, what we talked on last week. My mother lives on the corner of Valley View Road and Cascade Drive, and in the wintertime, okay? Wintertime, it's blocked off, and her, the, the cars are parked on Valley View Road and all the way down Cascade Drive. So I can't imagine how it would be in the summer. That's, that's number one on that side. Yeah, if you block the one side, you have to block the other side. The other thing that really concerns me more, while I'm sitting, listening to councilperson Friend talk, and yourself talking, so we're talking about closing the park one day. Your whole object of closing this park is cars speeding. So we're gonna close it on Sunday, but we're gonna let them speed through the park the other six days of the week? So that makes no, that, that argument about cars speeding and traffic makes no sense to me whatsoever. Wait a second now, okay? To me, we need to get with our police force, set a car there, and enforce a little speeding, okay, to, to stop this. The other part of the whole deal is, that park, the hills going into that park, to walk up that hill, older people aren't gonna do that, okay? There's a lot of people that wanna park at the Eagle, like Mark said, walk their kids. How about the people, am I wrong in asking, isn't there a South Woods Pavilion that people rent for parties and picnics? Sunday is the day that you would be doing that. So, and weddings, okay? Alright, I mean, it just, to me, makes no sense at all. If anything, what we're talking about, we need to get with our police department and see if we could have a patrol go through a couple times, because I'm gonna be bringing something up, and I was with you two weeks ago in Proctor Park. Your group and my group, we cleaned it all up. I walk there every day, and on Wednesday, in between the parks, it's full of litter. Okay, so my point of what I'm trying to get at, we have a great police department, they do what they need to do. We need to enforce a littering law. We need to... Somebody be there. Drive through the park. If a car's speeding, pull it over. You know how it always was? You stop a few people, give a few people a few tickets, they think about it. So that, that's my biggest concern. Everybody's talking here about speeding in narrow roads, and we're talking about closing it one day a week, so the other six days, we can just go through and do whatever we wanna do. Makes no sense to me whatsoever. Just my point.
No, 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 one second, uh, councilman.
I got, I got one question. When they shut down Proctor Park, you know, the roads back when we were in high school that were open, do you know, do you remember when they shut those down?
Yes, we used to hang around Proctor Park.
Yeah, I understand, but, you know, we had a lot of ball fields there, so they shut them down, cause cars were going through there sometimes fast. Cause we had a lot of ball fields there. I'm, that's what I'm assuming. But do you remember when they did it, in the nineties?
It was, it was early nineties.
You did.
Any other council people for the let or... Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. I, I, I'm in agreement as far as, um, you know, not, I, I don't wanna close the park down. And another element that we may have too, is once you lock those gates, and let's say a walker does have some stress and maybe needs some assistance as far as an ambulance or something, or maybe a golfer or something like that, and you have these gates locked, it's gonna delay the response time as well. So I always thought about that. Um, I just would hate to see, you know, that, that emergency vehicles cannot get in at, at any given point. So when, when the park is open, the gates should be open. You, uh, you have golf, golfers on the course. I think Joe made a good point as far as you have some parties going on up at the South Woods. Uh, I don't know how wide the, the road is. Maybe put a walking lane in there, maybe a stripe for a walking lane to separate, uh, the two. That may be an idea. Um, I, I don't know the exact width of the road where, if you could have two vehicles passing side by side. I, I do walk it at times, but I, I couldn't tell you if two vehicles can go at the same time, plus a walker, you know, all three at the same time. So, um, I, I'm not for it. I think the park should be open. Uh, Mark Williamson made a, a good point. Older people, for them to park on Oneida Street and try to walk up that hill. It's a steep hill, and wanna go enjoy themselves and overlook the city, and then sit at the Eagle, and maybe have a picnic, or, or walk their grandkids, or even pushing a stroller up that hill. I think it would be, uh, it just wouldn't be the right thing. And a lot of people work during the week, so they wanna enjoy their weekend. So why do we have to shut that down on a weekend, especially when weekends are made, you know, to go visit the parks and, and enjoy themselves throughout the city? So I'm, I'm in agreement. I'm not going to support this legislation. There we go. Thanks.
I'm not gonna be a voting member on this, of course, but I just have something that I'd like all the council members, uh, for or against to consider, uh, for this proposal and moving forward. Um, I actually use both, or I shouldn't say both, um, the T.R. Proctor Park, the lower parks off of Rucker Street and Culver Ave. I also do drive, um, some scenic drives over Steel Hill and Master Garden. Um, and this consideration, I wanna start with the, basically commending the conservancy and the Parks Department for, um, rebuilding and revitalizing a lot of the, uh, Proct, a lot of Proctor Park on Rucker Street and Culver. Uh, the reason I say that is, there's a lot of concentration going on to those parks right now, and those are the parks which, again, the roads were closed. Uh, one, because it was not that, there is parking lots, and there's also Rucker and Culver next to the parks, so they were almost duplicate roads. Um, so it wasn't really, um, a thorough fair obstruction when they closed those. But those parks have become the parks, where if you're going to walk and do those types of activities where you want no cars around, that's the park I go to with my kids. Um, and this isn't to say anything particular about the Sundays, part of, part of your proposal, but typically what I do, uh, in the summer, when I'm going to dinner at my parents' house over in East Utica, I'll drive over, and we'll do a nice scenic drive from Oneida Street over to Valley View on the way to my parents' house. And, uh, sometimes we do go up to the top... And sometimes we do go up to the top and stop, but I guess, I never thought about the fact that Roscoe Conkling was, was open to traffic, because I just kinda looked at that like a feature of Roscoe Conkling, that we do in fact have legal roads going through that part of the park, and that's how people use them. And then the other parks were in fact more tailored to people just walking around and having fun and doing whatever, without being concerned with traffic. So we do have a current balance with the park system, and the one where we're putting tons of resources in to revitalize is the park that is more tailored to just foot traffic and hiking and exploration at this point. So I just want that to be considered. Because people do in fact require, for many of the uses the other council people needed, that legal road to be open on Steel Hill and Master Garden. And it would, even if it's only one day away, definitely as some of the other people pointed out, render that not functional for people who do require a vehicle to get to those pieces of the park to enjoy it. The scenic views, et cetera. So I just wanted to put all that out there from my side of thought process on that. Thank you.
Before we hear from any guests, or the letter that we receive, any other council people wanna chime in on the issue? Or councilmember Friend, you wanna respond to any of it?
Yeah, I, yeah, I'll take the opportunity. I'll take the, the opportunity to respond to a few things. The idea that, that Sundays don't work because that's exactly when people want to drive onto the work, right, because it's the weekend, that argument cuts absolutely both ways. So, there are young families who want to be able, who work all week long and wanna teach their kids to ride a bike by riding a bike up Onida, up Onida, up Master Garden from Onida. They, they also only have the weekends. So the idea that sort of Sundays are the prime thing for driving is just as true for those who want to walk, cycle, jog, et cetera, into the park. It, it cuts really in both directions. And in fact, if anything, the retired people who want to be able to drive up there have far more flexibility with the six days a week that the roads would still be open to traffic. I mean, part of what I think is so, so interesting about the amount of pushback that this, that this legislation is producing is that we're only talking about one day a week. One day a week when people can enjoy the park without having to share it with cars. Now, to Mr. De Brango's point, I haven't measured the road, but I'm pretty certain that Master Garden would not be wide enough to accommodate both two lanes of traffic as well as, I mean, I like the idea of like striping it in such a way that you say you create a bike slash walking lane. That makes a lot of sense. I don't think it's wide enough for two lanes of traffic plus that. It's a fairly narrow road. In fact, I think that I've heard Dave Short say, it's actually narrow enough that when cars do need to pass each other, they end up sort of driving, you know, way out on the shoulder. As, you know, there isn't much of a shoulder. So I don't think it's safe enough for, for all of that. The idea that the gates need to be unlocked in order that people, like, emergency vehicles could access them, I actually think that there's a good argument there for, instead, they currently have padlocks, so somebody has to have a key, and you have to make sure that the right car has the right key. I think that there's a really good argument for making those electronic locks, so that any emergency personnel could call the squad commander's office, and there's a code, and you press the code and, and in you go. But also, if that's a real concern, I don't know why people aren't upset now that those gates are locked, because those gates are locked now.
Because there's a reason why they're closed. They don't open up until May 1st, and they shut down end of October. That's why.
Microphone.
You're up there at your own risk. See, during the off time, people go up at the top of the Forest Hill Cemetery, Forest Hill, not New Forest, Forest Hill, they park at the end, and then they walk in through the back, and then they use the park up there. Just like, I walked up there this past weekend, I had to park over by the Parks Garage, and I had to walk all the way in.
Right.
Which is fine, I understand that. But that's because I'm parking at my own, I'm walking up there at my own risk, because legally, that road is not open right now, until May 1st.
Right.
And then that opens up. But everybody else, you know, that place is, I mean, they park up at Forest Hill, and they walk through the back, they have six months of all the walking they want.
So in other words, even when the gates are locked, people can drive to the top of that hill and gain access to the park? By driving up to the top of Forest Hill and then walking it around that fence?
They, they do, they walk through the woods, they hike through the woods.
So act, so in fact, what you just told us is that keeping the gates closed one day a week will not prevent people from driving almost all the way up to the Eagle.
But it's closed six months out of the year, okay? It's closed six months out of the year.
No, I understand that.
For traffic.
What I'm saying is hypothetically, in July, you close, you close the gates on Sundays, you just told us that people can still drive almost all the way to the Eagle.
They, no, they drive up to Forest Hill.
Right, to the top of Forest Hill.
And then they walk, they cut through the, the woods, and they, they walk those, those roads.
Right, in other words, people will still be able to drive up to the top of the hill even on the days that the, the gates were hypothetically closed. That's what you just said.
But they're breaking the law because they're not, they're on private, they're on Forest Hill property, okay? So-
I think we get the point about, basically you're saying that if that is the case, then they can still access the top.
So that should be all the more point where the people that want to walk on Sunday should park at Forest Hill, walk through the parking lot.
What I'm getting at is, they're, they're breaking the law because they're up there, they're not there visiting people, they're using Forest Hill Cemetery as a, to park their car.
Right.
Which you're not supposed to do.
Right.
All right, that's private property, all right? You know, it's a cemetery. And so what they do, and some people go up there, they, they do what they do and everything, they cut through the woods, whatever. But that park is closed six months out of the year. And that's why it's, it's very busy during the summer months. All right, it should've been, you know, it should've been open two weeks ago, actually, because it was nice weather.
Well, I thought you said it was, May 1st was the law.
That's right, that's what it is, May 1st.
Is the law?
That's what Dave Short said to me.
Is it the law?
I'm pretty sure it is.
No, there's no law.
There isn't?
Nope.
How do you know?
Because I asked, because I did the legislative research. The judge did the legislative research. There's actually currently no law regulating Master Garden or Steel Hill in terms of when it opens and when it closes.
Well, Dave Short's been doing it for twenty years, so he says May 1st, and he shuts it down.
Yeah, that's fine, just don't say that it's the law, because it's not.
Okay, what I'm gonna do now is, do you have a comment, Mr. President?
What's that?
I said, did you have a comment?
I was just gonna get in between this and say that it's possible that it's lawful for the executive of the city, of the city, to have those closed between May 1st, and, okay, that's-
All right, before, I know you invited Mr. Bean, I want to read this letter, it's kinda lengthy. Says, Dear Council President Galeamy, Councilperson Friend, and other members of the Utica Common Council, I'd like to take a moment to express my concerns and opposition to the proposed legislation for car-free Sundays in Roscoe Conklin Park. To start, I am a city, I am a City of Utica resident who has the luxury of being able to see the Parkway Recreation Center and Val Bialis Sky Hill from my house, and can easily walk to the facilities and park. My husband and I utilize Roscoe Conklin Park year-round and love hiking, the ski hill on foot, the skis and snowshoes, when I am feeling down to, the hill isn't open for downhill skiing. I even hike up in my gear and ski down. We enjoy playing tennis and walking the dogs around the recreation center. I often enjoy trek through the park and will enter, make a three-mile loop from my house, and will simply do an out and back up to the Eagle via Onida Street and Master Garden Road. These are wonderful activities and ways to stay active and get some exercise in. Our favorite part of the park is the Eagle Monument. So much so that my husband and I are often up there twice a day, seven years, and countless years with my husband. We drive to Eagle to walk around the top of the hill. Near the zoo, we walk the dogs, enjoy coffee and a bagel, catch the sunrise and sunset, and we simply take in the view of the city. We are there so often that my husband's van can even be seen parked in the parking area. In a recent Google Earth image, long last, we love the park. My biggest concern, and I am not alone, is that closing down the park one day a week will create an access barrier to people who, whose mobility is impaired. There is ample parking up at the Eagle Monument, and it is, and it is a spot that is, that is utilized by individuals with mobility impairments, and by agencies slash staff who provide services to people with mobility impairments and varying abilities. It's a place that brings people great joy. It is the best spot in the park to get the most bang for your buck. I will go to the last paragraph, this is a huge dissertation. The last says, I appreciate your time and thank you for reading my concerns. Roscoe Conklin Park is a true gem, and I look forward to seeing it flourish. Basically Jenna Webb is voicing her opposition, I want to read that into the record, and now we'll give, Mr.-
Who is it? What's her name?
Jenna Webb.
Jenna Webb?
Yeah.
Is she a Utica-
Yeah, she says she's a Utica resident.
You gotta put that in the record, too.
I said it in the beginning part.
What?
That she's a Utica resident.
What street she live on?
She didn't give her address, she said it in her letter.
She's a Utica resident, she lives in my ward.
She said, I'm a Utica resident. Mr. Bean, for the last few moments.
Memorial Drive in Cambridge, Mass., which is an enormous thoroughfare that runs parallel to the Charles River, and it's closed every Sunday for, yeah.
A lot of businesses on there, too, I would assume, right? We don't have businesses on-
No, there are no businesses on it, it's Memorial Drive.
Businesses in the sense that they make offices, or they're closed. So, there are no shops.
Right.
I think there were speed bumps up there, and somehow they were taken out years ago. There was. But they were, there were some speed bumps there.
So, yeah, so one idea, so Phil is presenting the idea of closing that gate, which is a big metal gate that swings out just, just beyond the Eagle on Master Garden. Another possibility, and this is building off of what Mr. De Brango said, would be to make the, the road from Onida Street out to Valley View one-way. So you had to come into the park on Onida Street, and you had to go out on Valley View, and then we could stripe it so that there is room for walkers, cyclists, and actually also wheelchairs. At the moment, our parks, and, you know, people who are concerned about mobility issues, our parks are actually in violation of the ADA, because the ADA doesn't say wherever other people can, wherever people can walk, other people must be able to drive. What it says is, if you can walk into something, you have to also be able to get a wheelchair into something. So there ought to be an ability to get around the gate, and the, the most obvious one would be at Valley View. We ought to be able to get around that gate in a wheelchair, scooter, Segway, those are the things that the ADA requires. It doesn't require that if, if I can walk somewhere, somebody else must be able to drive that same place. That, that wouldn't make any sense. But we could, I like the idea of speed bumps, and I also think that we could think about turning that stretch of the road into one-way so that people could get up to the Eagle and then keep going, they would go out Valley, and come out at the Valley View.
So you'd have to go, so if you're driving that way, you live in South Utica, you gotta drive to East Utica to get in the park. And if you live in East Utica, you gotta drive to South Utica to get in the park.
No, what I actually just, first of all, you know what, your sarcasm is unwelcome, Mr. Beatrice, and unnecessary. It just is. You know, in a small enough city like ours, I don't think that that's huge, but actually, you weren't listening carefully enough. You would go in from South Utica, you would go in on Onida, and you would come out in East Utica, and then, and vice versa.
I was listening, but if you live in East Utica, to go into the park, you gotta drive to South Utica.
Big whoop. It's not very far away, we're a small city.
Five, six miles.
I, yeah, I doubt it.
Well, look, you gotta go to-
It actually is, it's six miles.
It's six miles. You gotta go, the Parkway is one way.
That doesn't benefit South Utica versus East Utica, both would have-
I'm not saying it benefits anybody, I'm just saying you're going down one side.
Mr. Williams just said, good for South Utica.
You have the floor, Councilperson Friend.
Thank you. So I like the idea of speed bumps, and I also like the idea of closing that gate that is just beyond the Eagle, which is a big metal gate that, that swings shut, that would, all of that would sort of slow down the traffic so that people could feel safe up there. The fact of the matter is, there are lots of people in Utica who want these kind of recreational opportunities in their city. We have an enormous treasure in the Olmsted Parks, and some people are not using them the way that they could, precisely because they don't feel safe sharing a road with cars.
With those type of changes, with that, would you take back this legislation about closing the road if, if the city put the speed bumps up there and try to navigate the- No, no, my point was still about the recreation, like, you know, was she-
Well, I think we could bring other legislation that would do those other things, that would get us some direct, some distance towards achieving the same goal.
Councilman, hold on, wait, Councilman Miola, then.
I, I just want to add, you're absolutely correct, Councilman Williamson, there was speed bumps there, and if there wasn't any speed bumps last year, of course, we could talk to Dave Short and have them reinstalled. Secondly, it was a public safety issue I think they're all going through right now with the gates and everything else, so. We, when the chief was here last, last council meeting, when we brought it up, I asked him, was there any personal injury for, a long time ago, he says, Frank, there was never a personal injury since I've been chief at the, at the park due to a, a vehicle. So that also helps the argument of the majority of my colleagues about not closing the gate at this time. If there was a public safety issue and the speeding could be corrected by both speed bumps and possibly putting an officer there, as my other colleague mentioned.
Some signage as well.
And absolutely an additional signage.
It's, it's very well signed right now, actually, but-
Very well signed.
Right, it got recently, got signed, yep.
If it does develop any type of, you know,
Well, walkers.
unsafe for walkers, of, of course, we'll address that in the future, but at this time, I think that we should, you know, implement the speed bumps and go from there. Thank you.
I had one quick question. I know you had the poll. How many members were involved in the poll? Was it hundreds, was it fifty?
Two hu, oh, two hundred and nineteen, thanks, good question.
That's a pretty good number.
I hadn't mentioned that, yeah. It went to my newsletter, which is mostly South Utica, not just South Utica. And it also went on Facebook, which reaches sort of a wider. It also went out to the Utica Roadrunners. It's a survey, there's no way to be short of hiring John Zogby to do an actual poll for us, which would be randomized and would do all that good stuff. There's no way to have sort of a really scientific poll on this. But it went out to a pretty wide audience, and I, and most of the people who answered it, I'm very confident, are from Utica.
Councilperson, do you know how many people are from Utica, or you can't tell that?
There's no way to know for certain.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any more comments, we have to go into our pre-caucus.
Can I make, say one more thing? Thank you. I, we, I was planning on having the map up there, which we don't have, which is fine. This is not just a South Utica issue. One of the things that's interesting, when you look at, there it is, when you look at, it's hard to see from here, but that's fine, when you look at that map, part of what's interesting is to see how much of Corn Hill, East Utica, and South Utica wrap around that park. This is not just a South Utica problem, or a South Utica desire. wrap around that park, this is not just a South Utica problem, or a South Utica desire. There are all those people who live in Corn Hill, those streets that go downhill from the parkway, all of those people could also have better access to the park on foot if one day a week we were to close that road. So, and also there's a bit of East Utica that kind of down there to the right. It's, this is not just about South Utica, this is a huge portion of our residential neighborhoods in the city, but up against Roscoe Conkling. Thank you.
Are we done?
All right. I'm adjourned this meeting, do I have to make a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn, close meeting.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Phil, thanks for coming, seriously. And actually, stick around for one second, I gotta, I, I gotta pull you aside.
You got ten?
Next is resolution number two, Commissioner of Deeds for Sherri LaSalle, Thalia Hunter, Bill Morehouse, and Katrina Martin. The next one is from Councilmember Friend, it's an ordinance amending section two dash one eight dash four eight dash five, exceptions by the addition of paragraph C one and two prohibiting vehi- vehicular traffic in and around Valley View Golf Course via Master Garden Road and Steel Road on Sundays between April fifteenth and October thirty-first. This will not be brought out tonight. Next is ordinance number four, this is limited parking, one hour parking, one, or eight AM to six PM. Ordain that section two dash one six dash three six three, schedule H, limited parking, one hour parking, eight AM to six PM, other, unless otherwise provided. Park Avenue, both sides between Elizabeth Street and Stubeen, be rescinded. And the next one is resi, uh, ordinance number five, it is limited parking, two-hour parking, eight AM to six PM, and this is doing it for Park Ave, East Side, between Lansing and Blandina. This is basically just cleaning up legislation, so what was there before is different hour, or different time that was, is for all of downtown Utica, so all of downtown Utica is ninety-minute parking, this was different than that, so this is just making everything uniform. Next is ordinance number six. It is a bond ordinance authorizing the issuance of 1,825,000 serial bonds of City of Utica, Oneida County, New York, to finance the cost of reconstruction of improvement of the city sewer system. We have Paul Romano here to speak upon this, and I'd like to give the floor over to him so that he can give us the information we need.
How's everybody doing? Thanks. I, I've been here a number of times for these projects. It's a series of projects called the CSO Control Projects for the City of Utica. They were all developed in 2011 under the city's Combined Sewer Overflow Long-Term Control Plan. And basically, you know, the city at that time was approached by D.C. and had to be, had to undertake a number of projects to lower the amount of sewer overflow when it rains. Basically, all the flow from the sewers cannot get to the plant because we have a lot of this portion of the city, a lot of the city is both, in the pipes are both sanitary sewer and storm that run in the same pipes. So when it, when it storms, certain, certain storms, what happens is not all the flow can get to the treatment plant and be treated there. There's reliefs throughout the system. Those reliefs, in more or less, get directed to Nail Creek, Blue Creek, and Mohawk River where diluted raw sewage enters those bodies. So the city had to undertake a program, you know, it's 10 years old now, to do a number of, a number of projects to reduce the amount of that overflow going into those river bodies during rain events. And so a lot of these projects we call separation projects. They're projects that take those combined sewer pipes. Instead of one big pipe, there'd be great, a stormwater pipe and a sanitary sewer pipe so that the stormwater, clean stormwater, relatively clean stormwater can flow to the river and water bodies. And the sanitary sewer, less sanitary sewer then, is directed to the plant, and the plant can handle more of that sewage, thereby reducing the volume of, the overflow volume. So we've undertaken, this is probably the seventh project in front of the council. All of them, all of them gone through in prior. They're all in the plan and then they're all basically referenced inside the city's speedy's, city's permit for Combined Sewer Overflow that they hold with the Department of Environmental Conservation. All these projects are done with the Environmental Facility Corp. holding the loan, the bond. Basically, it's a, it's financed through Environmental Facility Corp. through a no-interest bond system so that you do the bond ordinance. The Environmental Facility Corporation of New York State holds the note. They, because the city is called a hardship city because of the levels of, you know, people's incomes, they, the city's able to get 0% interest on the short-term and hardly, very negligible, zero to very, less than market on long-term bonding. So that all the, all the, everything is financed through EFC. EFC pays the city. When the contractor's bills come in, the EFC, you know, does the payments. And eventually, that short-term loan goes to long-term at the end of the project. And I, also, part of this project says 1.825 million. About 1.25 is low-interest, no-interest loan. And the remainder is a grant from D.C. under the Water Quality Improvement Grant. All this, all this is financed through, yeah, this is not, this is, goes under the sewer rate, sewer use order, you know, under the sewer rate. Ratepayers through the sewer, not through the, you know, general fund or anything that, not through taxes, but the sewer rate. And it's all been built in. In fact, the City of Engineering Department, and Debbie Day leads a lot of this work. We had a project last year or two years ago, it was supposed to cost $2.5 million through the efforts of the city to do separation. That was supposed to be remote treatment system. That $2.5 million project went to $400,000. So that, that opened up a lot of room in the rates. And even with this project in it, we're still ahead, you know, on, on the sewer rates. So I don't know how much detail you want on this specific project, but this project is, it takes a sewer line through this, near Potter Street, and brings it, it's a storm sewer line, and it brings it right to the Mohawk. And prior to that, in that section of the city, there was, it was all combined flow. So that, that section of the city, which is, of course, important right now with the hospital campus being there because they're, they're adding stormwater flow. But that section of the city did not have a stormwater outlet. It was all combined. So this adds a stormwater outlet so that we can take the cleaner stormwater right out to the river and open up sewer capacity, sanitary sewer capacity in the sewers around there, allowing more, you know, sanitary flow to go to the plant. This, this needs to be done.
First, sorry, Councilperson Friend already.
I, I guess I just have a general question. So can you explain to us, like, where we stand overall? Isn't, is it called the MS4 requirement from the EPA about separating out sanitary and storm? Where do we stand, like, in, as a, in general, how are we doing on that?
Well, MS4 would be a program that monitors the stormwater quality, okay? This was, this is under the EPA's Combined Sewer Overflow Regulations. We are doing great. And, and I, I'm going to give, I'm, I'm a consultant. I'm going to give the credit to the Engineering Department. I mean, they, they were very aggressive. They avoided a consent order and they, they have completed, yeah, environmental, they have high grades at New York State Environmental Facility Corp. Because the city has undertaken these projects aggressively and kept on schedule. So really, you know, this is the last one that has to be done before it's going to go into a post-long-term control plan monitoring phase. And we have to, the city's going to have to monitor the bacteria levels in the Mohawk River. And if those are acceptable, then the rest of the projects in the long-term control plan, because there's still more, will, are essentially optional. But, you know, we have to get through, we have to get through this monitoring phase next to see if we're going to pass that stage.
And, and that, those bacterial levels are because when you're, when you're storm and sanitary overflow, you end up, whether you want to or not, dumping sanitary, dumping sewage into your river, and then that creates bacteria.
It creates the fecal chloroform, chloroform bacteria. And, you know, compared to what it was 10 years ago, I mean, you know, we got, get new baselines and levels, but so much has been separated that we expect good results.
Okay.
Great, you know.
Thank you very much.
Councilman DeBrango, you have the floor next.
Yeah, the projected start date, would that ease the flooding down there in the Harbor Point area in the north Utica? Will that ease it a little bit, or?
It won't really have effect on the flooding at Harbor Point. You know, that's kind of a different situation. I mean, there's other solutions being looked at relative to that, but that, that's such a huge flood plain and it's, it's controlled. You know, the Mohawk River levels are really override the, you can't do much, you know, this doesn't, this really is, this is more about water quality and sewer treatment than it is flood resistance.
Yeah, and the approximate start date, is this sometime this year?
Should be in the ground. There's a few things to get through of the financing agreement with EFC. We have CSX permits and everything else, but, so I don't think this will be started until next spring, you know, 2022. But the, the bond order needs to be passed in order us to get, go to the EFC financing application.
Understood.
That has to be done, this has to be done first before we can finalize the financing application.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Councilman Miola, you have the floor next.
Thank you, Ms. Majori. I just got a couple of questions. I mean, we, our Budget Director, Councilor, how? You said it was built in the payment? How?
You wanted to go ahead.
So, so Debbie Day and I, if you remember.
I know, we paid to our sewage tax, the City of Utica, but how was it built in? They just raised it?
So, so about a decade ago, when, when the city knew that they were going to have to do these projects, they started estimating what they would have to raise rates by to keep up with the debt payments.
Okay.
Okay? So as, as Paul was mentioning, one of the projects that was $2.5 million that we were going to have to make debt payments on, Debbie Day and Paul worked with EFC and actually brought it down to 400,000.
Oh, very good. So it leaves us some open principle, okay.
So over the past four years, we have not raised rates. Initially, we, we were going to.
Okay.
And we, we stopped until we saw when, because some of this stuff is, as Councilman DeBrango was asking, when does it start? If it starts today, right, those payments will start a year earlier. So a lot of it is, is a timing of when debt comes off. We talked about that last.
We got that.
Right? So right now, we're going to have to take another look at, into the future as to, you know, if we're going to have to raise rates. But we have not raised rates on our sewer fund in four years.
All right, what, what, do you have an anticipated payment yearly on this one, on this bond?
So we did ask EFC. The problem is, we don't know what the interest rate we're going to pay. It could be as little as zero.
Oh, it is zero, the interest rate, because it just testified to that.
Or, or, or less than market.
So the short-term financing is zero. The long-term's anywhere, is zero to less than market. It's usually fractional. It's, but it usually is, there's a tiny little bit when it gets converted to long.
I'm assuming we have to pay within a certain period and the payment has to be a certain amount. Do we calculate that before this bond goes through? Do we know how much a payment?
I reached out knowing that, that you were going to ask that question of EFC.
Okay.
EFC, when they get ready to go long-term financing, they pull together all kinds of other debt issuances, communities all over the state. So they never really know what the interest rate is going to be. I don't believe we're paying anything over 2%. And this is for projects in the past.
All right, the principal, the, the principal, the, the payment, how, do we know how much are next, this ain't going to come to fruition until next year?
We're probably not going to see a payment for four or five years.
Yeah.
Okay, so do we know about approximately how much the payment will be? Do you have no idea at this time?
At one point, it's basically.
On 1.8, how much?
1.8, yeah.
Well, just divide it out by, by 30 years.
All right, so we, we can finance it for 30 years. There's no 15-year because they're charging us no interest. So there's nothing that we have to compensate by paying for 15.
Because they're new pipes. They're brand-new pipes. They're not repairs. That's why the, the amount of time is extended on the useful life and how long you can borrow.
So keep in mind, when we had all these projects, we lined them up, Debbie Day and myself, and we did the rate analysis. And we have, it hasn't been raised, raised rates for four years, but you guys did raise them three years in a row based on.
I remember, I was there.
Yes.
So that's what I'm asking you. What, do we have anything, our taxpayers have to pay anything additional with this bond at this time?
No.
At this time, no.
Okay.
But you're probably looking in.
Four years.
Maybe 75 grand a year.
75,000 a year, okay. With that stated, you also said something about the bacteria level, levels?
Yeah.
What's the county sewage plant do?
It's all, it's all part of that one solution.
Doesn't these pipes go into the county sewage plant?
Yeah, so, so it's the combination of this work that the city's doing that probably in the end add up to 35 million, 40 million when, when look at it all together. And the $300 million of investment they're doing, the county and the treatment plant.
Right, which they raised our sewer taxes 18%.
These work together. We negotiate the D.C., the county and city work together and negotiate the one big solution with D.C. But, so the, this separation's happening, but also the plant in wet weather doubles in capacity. And it basically will take double the city flow during wet weather than it is today. You know, then it, you know, it's actually close to accepting that. So, so that's how, it needed all those solutions to pass EPA regulations to get to that point.
For future sewage.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you for answering my questions.
Councilman Lametico, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks. Hi, Paul, you know, long time no see. I, I took that 1, 1,825 divided by 30, I come to a little over 60,000.
I know, I added 15 for interest.
Well, this is a lot.
So when I get close, well, you know what? If, if I tell you 60 and, and you come back in a couple of years and you said, Heather, you said 60 and it's 70, so.
Well, 10,000 is a lot.
I needed to add something in, so.
I remember numbers, Jack.
I'd rather be high than be low.
Keep in, keep in mind, there's, there's about $600,000 in grants. So it's really 1.25 that's going to be financed.
So it'll be, so maybe it'll be around 60 after we knock off the interest and everything like that.
But what happens is, it often isn't just divided by 30. It could be higher the first year. They, they do a smoothing technique, so.
And we couldn't use our infrastructure money that's hopefully coming in from the federal government. I'm sorry, Jack.
Well, the reason, you know, we could, but this is basically free money. This is basically free money.
Interest-free money.
Interest-free money.
But believe me, there's a lot of other infrastructure projects that you could think about.
We won't have any problems on that.
The, but I, I guess where this is really going to come, going to work well is when we have these deluges in the, in the summer where we have these tremendous rainstorms and it's hitting our sewer systems. And this is going to help when we have those tremendous storms like we've been having like every other year. It's going to be able to separate it. We're not going to overload our, our sewer, our system down there, the county system. Is that pretty much why we're doing this, do you think?
What's happening is there's, you're improving the water quality of the Mohawk River. I mean, you know, by regulation.
Right.
You know, this is, less and less raw sewage is getting into the Mohawk River during rainstorms, you know. Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, 10 years ago, it was a pretty bad situation. It's not like this, again, it wasn't the city's, it was directed by federal government and then the D.C., so it wasn't an option, but.
Right, and Paul, doesn't, and the, the Mohawk River and the canal sort of merge in the Utica area here as well, don't they?
Right.
So this is a real boon for, I, I would think, the Harbor Point coming in wells. We're going to have cleaner water in, in, in the canal as well in that area there for boating and fishing and things of that nature. So this is, this is a win-win for, for the sportsmen as well as the, the citizens of the city.
Absolutely. That stretch of the Mohawk through the city getting cleaner is only, only mean good, really good things.
Excellent, thank you.
Councilperson Friend, you have the floor.
So just going back a second. So were you saying, so the excess rainwater, stormwater, would be getting dumped directly into the Mohawk? Aren't we supposed to clean stormwater somewhat? You don't have to clean it like you have to clean what comes out of your sanitary, but you do have to clean it somewhat, right?
Yeah, so it's like the lesser two evils, right? You know, you, a lot more damage being done by combined sewer going in the Mohawk than separated stormwater. But you're right, separated stormwater should still be managed. And that's, you know, that, that's being done through state regulations and state stormwater management, which requires more infiltration, detention, you know, devices to clean stormwater. So every time, because of the state's regulations, every time a new development happens and everything else, the better controls go in to, to improve the stormwater quality that's going out, you know. So that, that is happening, you know, at the same time.
Right, but this particular project is going to end in stormwater getting dumped directly into the Mohawk?
Right, but, but if it didn't happen.
It would be sanitary and stormwater.
There'd be a lot of raw sewage going.
Right, right, right.
And, and also, you got to think about, what it does is open up more sanitary sewer capacity to get, to allow more sewage to get to the plant for treatment that's not blocked by the stormwater going to the plant.
Right, right.
So, and, and really needed that capacity with investments like the hospital going in that location. You needed to open up that sanitary sewer capacity, especially in that portion of the city. So, yeah, really important.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions regarding this for Paul? Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, my pleasure. Thanks, good seeing everybody. Thanks.
You too. Next is ordinance number seven. Councilmember Miola, an ordinance amending section 2-28-31 of the Utica City Code by the addition of section 2-28-31B6.
Ms. Majori, before I move on this, I'd like to, I hadn't had the opportunity to talk to the chief personally on it to make sure he approves of it. So if you don't mind, number seven, number eight, I'd like to refer to committee until I speak to the chief on it.
No problem. Thank you. Next is resolution number nine. It is a Commissioner of Deeds for Lorraine Washburn. Next is Commissioner of Deeds for Devin Lindsey. Next is a Commissioner of Deeds for Anthony Carmen Leone, Jr. And that's it. Is there anything anyone wants to?
Yeah, I've, so we've, I've added some, a couple more clauses to the Garden Walks resolution. So I'll be bringing that out tonight. Do people want me to tell them, tell you what I did now? Okay, so what I did, basically, the last time we talked about this, which was a couple of months ago.
Which committee is that sitting in?
This is, I think it's in the Committee of the Whole.
Is the new one in the, oh, all right.
David has it, David has it.
I was going to put it on the screen.
Oh, okay. No, the judge hasn't, hasn't looked at it yet. I really just did this this afternoon, so, sorry about that. So what I did was I added, the last time we talked about this, people wanted a few more details that would make clear that the garden tour itself is on private property, not city, and that the city would not have any liability. So I've added the following paragraphs. Whereas the Utica Garden Walk is only of private gardens and organized by private gardeners and will not require any resources from the city and yet can benefit the city. And whereas the organizers of the Utica Garden Walk have obtained their own liability insurance, and so this event presents no risk to the City of Utica. I've added those two clauses. Everything else is exactly the same.
And to be clear, it's still a resolution, right?
Yes, it is still a resolution.
Ms. McKenna called me. She said that her organization does have the liability insurance now. I said, well, you just got to get all the permits and go by the law of the city.
Right.
And you can do what you want to do. And you can do what you want to do. So, it has nothing to do with city resources, like she said.
Right, the city isn't, yeah, using any resources.
Yeah, I know the discussion last time was, if you look at the last line, it says "the plan." And there was no plan. I remember the judge saying that. And I think if we eliminate that and just embrace the annual Utica Garden Walk would be okay. It's my opinion.
That makes sense.
Okay.
All right, so let's, so the other amendment then that I would make would, it would just read, hereby endorse and embrace an annual Utica Garden Walk. So, we would take out the Plan Four. Thanks, Mr. DeBai, I hadn't thought of that.
Councilman Miola, you have the floor.
So, I'm assuming, Councilwoman Friend, that you would like to discharge the one in committee.
Well, I was thinking of this was, this is, this has a different number on it for...
You can't have both, in other words, either you amend the one in committee to this...
Yeah, that's my plan, that was my plan.
So, you want to amend the one in committee to this, so you got a motion to, you get a motion, take it out of committee, then we have to amend it?
Right.
All right, so this is actually not number twelve resolution?
No.
It's the amendment of resolution number six.
That's right.
Councilman Miola, strike and replace? Yep. All right. Please. All right. So, when you pull out of committee, strike the current one and replace it with this one.
With number twelve?
Or the text of this one. However, Councilman Miola was, I'm just saying, strike and replace would be the motion for him.
Okay.
All right, all right.
Well, the judge's got twenty minutes to look at it.
I couldn't hear you.
Yeah, he's got twenty minutes.
Anything else before we close the meeting?
Brace the end.
Oh, the end, okay.
He's going proper...
So, then we take up Plan Four.
He's got to make sure he puts the right fuel.
All right. Everyone good with closing out the meeting?
Yes, I'm good.
Second it.
Okay, we'll be back here at seven.
Thank you.
Tony, take the feet down, thank you.
Promptly.
It is April 21st. City of Utica Common Council Clerk, please call the roll.
McNeil, Burmaster, Friend, Miola, Moody, Beatrice Williamson, LaMedico, DeBrango, Gleme, all present.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence for the deceased members of the council.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first order of business this evening will be the minutes of the previous meeting. Is there any motions on the floor, or would you like me to go through the minutes?
Motion to move the minutes.
All right. All right, we have a motion to, there they are, accept the minutes with the reading of them from the last meeting. Any opposed? All right, moving on. All right, next order of business this evening is public hearing. We have no legislation this evening in that order of business, nor have any public hearings been called for this evening, so the public hearing is now closed. We have no common council guests, nor anyone signed up to speak for public comment. We do have communications from the mayor, which I'm going to read into the record. This is from Mayor Robert Paul Mary dated April 21st, 2021. Mayor's message to the common council. "I wanted to share some updates with the common council." This is, of course, the mayor's words. "Due to the increase, due to the decrease of our local COVID-19 infection rate, increase in vaccination rates, and favorable," it says favorably weather, but I think it's favorable weather, "permits have been approved to utilize city fields for organized sports. In addition, city parks, playgrounds, basketball and tennis courts, as well as the fitness center at the Parkway Recreation Center are open to public to enjoy. Residents are required to make an appointment to reserve a spot at the fitness center. While these are certainly positive developments, I urge all residents to observe all public health guidelines." Mayor's words. "I've been in discussions with health officials, and our target to open City Hall is sometime next month in May. We are still determining the specific reopening policies. I will be sure to provide ample notice to council members once this decision is made. The Department of Public Works began green waste pickup on April 12th, and as of last night, gone through every section of the city. DPW will continue bulk green waste pickup until early June." That ends the mayor's message to the common council this evening. Reports from the city officers. Thank you for joining us this evening. I'm going to start with Deputy Chief Noonan.
Uh, yeah, thanks, Mr. President. Just on this Saturday at Union Station from 10:00 to 2:00, it's National Prescription Drug Takeback Day, so we'll be there with our partners, the Medi County Sheriff's Office, if anyone wants to bring any prescription pills that they have that are expired or no longer used, they can bring them down, and we dispose of them. Also, our annual report is, it's been completed, but it's finally up on our Uti Police Department website, so that's free for, you know, the public to take a look at that. It includes some good information about the Uti Police Department, statistics, budget, staffing, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you very much. Codes Commissioner, anything to report this evening?
I'm trying to think, maybe this is too technical a report, but I wanted to inform the council. So, the city gives and has been giving plumbing exams and electrical exams by statute to license plumbers and electricians. We usually, we used to use a third party to deliver those exams, and what's happened is we're beholden to the third party. They cancel exam, we got to cancel it. Sometimes people sign up with them, and we don't know it, and they show up to the test, and it eliminates the, it limits the frequency by which we can give an exam. So the city has made up its own plumbing and electrical exams. We're going to give, we've already given our first plumbing exam, we're giving our first electrical exam May 6th, and the idea is with all the construction going on, we can get people licensed a lot more quickly now, so instead of having to wait for two exams a year, if we get a concentration of tradesmen that want to get licensed, we could, we could turn that over in 30 days' time. So, just, if you know tradesmen, if you know apprentices, you might want to notify them of this change because now they can do their applications earlier, and we can schedule a test based on demand, rather than giving the two pre-thought-of tests every year. Was that too technical?
No, it's perfect. Good report, man. Anything else this evening?
They'll be able to look on the website for this information?
Yeah, they'll be able to look on the website for the information and for the application.
Is there a cost for it?
Yeah, so, the application fee, to present an application to the electrical board, is $20, and then the fee to actually take the test is 90, because we got to proctor in it and administer it. So, you pay the 20 bucks, you put in your application, we tell you whether or not you can take the test, and then you come up with $90 to be able to take the test.
Let's say that they're not qualified, and you reject it. Can, will they get their money back?
The, the way the statute reads, no, because that's how we pay for the electrical board. The electrical board is a paid position, so they, they review the applications for us. So it's not me saying they're not eligible, it's the electrical board, and we use the fees for their review to pay for reviewing those applications.
Right, and everything that they need, all the requirements are listed there, so...
They're all listed.
So, right, so they got to make sure...
So they should, we reject very few applications, I'd say one in 10, and that's just usually because, you know, in order to be an electrician, you have to have a certain amount of experience as an apprentice, and if you can't prove that experience, that's where we run into problems. Somebody that was supervising you has to say he worked with me for X amount of time.
All right, thanks.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you very much. We're going to move to petitions. Oh, I'm sorry. Clerk, are there any cash reports this evening?
Yes, the City of Utica cash report for March 2021 is 25 million, received and filed.
25 even?
25.050 million.
Wow. Pretty round number, I was curious. All right, petitions, remonstrances, appeals, and legislation. First District Councilmember and Majority Leader Maria McNeil, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am going to move resolution number two, Commissioner of Deeds, for Sherri LaSalle, Thalia Hunter, William Morehouse, and Katrina Martin.
Second.
All right. Your votes, throw them up on the board, please. Oh, sorry, hang on.
Nine A's adopted.
Next, I'd like to move ordinance number four, limited parking, one-hour parking, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Ordain that Section 2-16-363 Schedule H, limited parking, one-hour parking, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., unless otherwise provided, Park Avenue, both sides between Elizabeth Street and Stuben Park, to be rescinded.
We got a second for Miola. Your votes.
Nine E's adopted.
Last, I'll be moving ordinance number five, limited parking, two-hour parking, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Ordain that Section 2-16-36 Schedule J, limited parking, two-hour parking, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., unless otherwise indicated. Park Avenue East Side from the .90 feet north of the intersection of Park Avenue and Blandina Street to a point 100 feet south of the intersection of Park Avenue and John Street. Park Avenue East Side between Lansing and Blandina Street to be rescinded. These are basic, these are basic ordinances that are clearing up, clarifying some clerical things in downtown Utica, so now all parking will be uniformed, and it'll be 90-minute parking. Thank you.
Miola has a second on that one. Your votes, please.
And that'll be all for me this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Nine E's adopted.
All right, thank you. Second District Councilman Burmaster, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to discuss, but thank you.
Thank you. Third District Councilmember Celeste Friend, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to start by moving resolution number nine, Commissioner of Deeds, resolved with the common council, does hereby appoint the following person as Commissioner of Deeds in and for the City of Utica for a two-year term commencing April 21, 2021, and ending December 31, 2022. Lori A. Washburn, and I would like to stipulate that that name should be spelled L-O-R-I-A Washburn.
Who is L-O?
910 Simmons Place, Utica, New York 13502.
Second.
Second.
All right, your votes, your votes. Yeah, go for it.
Nine eights adopted.
Thank you.
And then I would like to move Resolution Number Ten. Another Commissioner of Deeds. Resolved that the common council does hereby appoint the following person, Commissioner of Deeds, City of Utica, two-year term commencing April 21st, 2021 and ending December 31st, 2022. Devon M. Lindsay, 910 Simmons Place, Utica, New York 13502.
Second from Miola. Your votes.
Nine eights adopted.
And then, lastly, Mr. President, I would like to move Resolution Number Six. I am pulling this from Committee of the Whole. And this is the Utica Garden Walk. I'm going to be amending it slightly, so I would like to read it in its entirety.
You may, and it's also on the screen in the WebEx, the amended one.
The amended version? Okay, and I'm going to change one little bit that's in there as well on that version.
I would suggest making a motion to remove this from committee.
I'd like to move to remove this from committee.
We have a second from Miola. Any opposed? All right, it's out. And then a motion to strike and replace with this legislation would be appropriate.
Make a motion.
All right, we have a motion to strike and replace. We have a second from Miola. Read the amend, the replaced legislation, please.
The version, the new version. This is a resolution to support a Utica Garden Walk, whereas gardens, gardeners and their gardens add to the beauty and vibrancy of our community, and whereas a local garden tour can help to beautify Utica, as well as to promote community pride and engagement, and whereas a local garden tour can increase tourism spending that will benefit local businesses by bringing more people into Utica to appreciate our local gardens, and whereas the Utica Garden Walk is only of private gardens and organized by private gardeners and will not require any resources from the city, and yet can benefit the city, and whereas the organizers of the Utica Garden Walk have obtained their own liability insurance, and so this events, this event presents no risk to the City of Utica, be it hereby resolved that the Utica Common Council does hereby endorse and embrace the annual Utica Garden Walk to commence July 10th, 2021.
All right, anyone opposed to the replaced legislation? This is the strike and replace motion.
I do want to make it clear, did the clerks hear, here I got that, I changed the last sentence a tiny bit. Okay.
All right, so, your votes.
Nine eights adopted.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's all I have this evening, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right, Fourth District and President Pro Tem Frank Miola, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move Resolution Number One. Board of Assessment Review Appointment, to be resolved pursuant to Section 523 of the Real Estate Property Tax Law. The following person is hereby appointed as a member of the Board of Assessment Review, commencing the remainder of a current five-year term, which commences October 1st, 2018, and ends September 30th, 2023. Joseph A. Falcone, 1623 Mohawk Street, Utica, New York 13501.
Second.
We got a second from Williamson. Oh, I'm sorry, that was Moody, actually, but, you know, it's all good. Your votes. Yeah, he had it.
He had it cleared to board, or?
No, we're good, I think. Just call it.
Nine eights adopted.
Thank you. Anything else this evening?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move to the Public Safety Committee, Ordinance Number Seven. Concerning amending Section 22831 of the City Code, the towing code, I'd like to refer that to the Public Safety Committee.
All right, I'm just looking forward here. Ordinance Seven, there we are. There's a, all right, we have a second to move that to committee. Any opposed? Ordinance Seven is in the Public Safety Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one more to move also to the Public Safety Committee, is Ordinance Number Eight. Amending the tow service Section 22847. I'd like to also refer to the Public Safety Committee.
Second from DeBranco. Any opposed to placing that in the Public Safety Committee? All right, sits in the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm all set.
Thank you. Fifth District Councilman Moody, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to mention briefly that tomorrow I'll be doing a listening town hall via Zoom from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30. You can go on my Facebook page to get the information. I want to make sure that I'm always listening to the constituents and making sure that they have any information and open forum to ask me any questions and get answers. So, any of my colleagues at large is more than welcome to join that call, Zoom Town Hall Virtual, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30. Also, too, I just want to just acknowledge the incident of yesterday. So many people had mixed emotions and feelings, but certainly the moment of seeing Derek Chauvin convicted of the death of George Floyd, and so my heart continues to go out to the family and to those communities all across America. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Sixth District, Joe Beechers, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to bring out Proposed Resolution Number Eleven. Commissioner of Deeds, resolved that the common council does hereby appoint the following person as Commissioner of Deeds in the City of Utica for a two-year term commencing April 21st, 2021 and ending December 31st, 2022. Anthony Carmen Leone Jr., 501 Mary Lane Drive, Utica, New York 13502.
There's a second from Williamson. Your votes.
Nine eights adopted.
The, I'd also like to talk about our city and the pride that people have in our city. I know, you know, we hear a lot of complaints on litter, on garbage, and, you know, the city can only do so much. A lot of this is, you know, it's people on, you know, their own properties that, you know, it's very tough to enforce. And I'm very proud to say that I have a couple constituents in North Utica. Mrs. Carcone, who, I sent you a couple pictures, if you can put on the screen, who, she went out and actually, the islands on Lee, I think it's, I believe it's Lee Boulevard and Herkema Road and Dland Drive and Leland, Dland Drive and Herkema Road. She landscaped them, put flowers on, she did it on her own. And I just want to give her a shout-out, and, you know, it's good that people take a lot of pride in their property, and we need everybody in the city to do that. And I'd also like to thank Dave Short for his quick response on a couple items I've had this week. It's very good to know that you can call somebody up and if you need something done, they're there within the next, you know, even, not even the next day, sometimes very much that day. So, there's your pictures there. It's Doreen Carcone, her husband Bernie Carcone, they're homeowners on Herkema Road. They take care of the neighborhood, and I'm proud to call them my friends and I'm proud to have them as constituents of my area. That's all I have tonight, Mr. President.
Council at Large and Minority Leader Mark Williamson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only thing I got going this weekend is keep America clean, so in your areas, get out there and get some volunteers and start cleaning up your neighborhoods. That's Saturday and Sunday. And if you need bags, just talk to Gene Allen. He's got bags and gloves, and go from there. So, it's that weekend to start picking up all the trash in the neighborhoods. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman at Large, Jack Lamedico, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one proposed ordinance, number six. And what I'll do is I'm going to read Sections 1 through 4.
Is this the bond ordinance?
Yeah.
Yeah, you could summarize that.
And what I'll do is then I'll read the last paragraph. Sponsored by Councilmen McNeil and Williamson. Bond ordinance authorizing the issuance of 1,825,000 serial bonds of the City of Utica, Oneida County, New York, to finance the cost of reconstruction and improvement of the city sewer system. The project is CSO Project A9 dot 1, be ordained by the affirmative vote of not less than two-thirds of the total voting strength of the common council of the City of Utica, Oneida County, New York as follows. The City of Utica, Oneida County, New York, is hereby authorized to undertake reconstruction and improvement of the city sewer systems, including sanitary sewer, storm sewer and surface draining facilities, including the acquisition of land or rights in land and original furnishing equipment, machinery or apparatus required in connection therewith reference as CSO Project A9 point 1 at an estimate maximum cost of $1,825,000. It is hereby determined that the aggregate maximum estimate cost for said specific objects or purpose to be financed by the city is $1,825,000. Set amount is hereby appropriated therefore, and the plan for the financing therefore shall consist of the issuance of 1,825,000 in serial bonds of the city which are hereby authorized to be issued pursuant to this ordinance and the provision of the local finance law. Section 3, any federal New York State grant funds obtained by the city for the capital purpose described in Section 1 of this resolution shall be applied to pay the principal of the interest of the bonds or any bond anticipation notes issued in anticipation of the bonds, or to the extent obligation shall not have been issued under this resolution to reduce the maximum amount to be borrowed for such capital purposes. The City Controller, as the chief fiscal officer, is hereby authorized to determine the allocation of any such federal or New York State grant funds for any one or more of the foregoing purposes. It is hereby determined that the period of probable usefulness of the aforementioned specific objects or purpose is 40 years pursuant to Paragraph 4, Section 11 dash dot 11A of the Local Finance Law. Section 17, the ordinance which takes effect immediately shall be published in full or summary form in the Observer-Dispatch, the official newspaper, together with the notice of the city clerk. Subsequently, the form provided in Section 81 of the Local Finance Law.
Okay.
Second.
We have a second from Williamson, your votes. Councilman Beechers. No, was that accurate?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just confirm it. Was that a yea or a nay?
It's a yes.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Nine eights adopted.
I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. Anything else, Councilman Lamedico?
That's it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Council at Large Frank DeBranco, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just what Councilman Lamedico just spoke of about that $1.825 million serial bond. I believe I was told 600,000 maybe already allocated through some grants for that. So, it isn't quite that much, but it is definitely needed, especially with the new hospital coming along. It's going to separate the sewage lines to the rainwater, have separate rainwater system going directly into the rivers, and the sewage line would go directly into Oneida County Sewer Plant. So, that is a much-needed project that we should get underway. It's pretty much mandatory. So, I think the interest rates are very low, 0% to maybe 2%. So I think it's a good choice by the council to adopt this. Today we received an email regarding the Police and Community Athletic League, and they're going to be bringing the police and the community together through sports and education. Last year they started this project with an indoor league. It was actual gaming, Nintendo or whatever it had, PlayStation 4. But now, since we could maybe loosen up and get outside, I guess they're starting a kickball league. It's going to start on every Wednesday from May 5th through May 26th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the East Utica Little League Field. Utica residents, grade 6th to 12th, should register at uticapcal.com. That's uticapcal.com. So it's a good thing, getting the community together, getting these young children to get to know the police officers and communicating with them and sharing a good experience. So that's a good thing going on in our community. I like to see that. As far as the schools, you know, the schools are already open. I hear a lot of complaints about traffic around the schools and the parking. And I understand Proctor is going to be adding the 9th and 10th graders there as well. So there's going to be a lot more people, a lot more activity coming up this coming week. So, anybody driving in the school zone or close to the school zone, please, please obey the rules and the speed limits because, and try to, you know, park properly, because it does get congested at times. And God forbid we do have an emergency there. We want to make sure we get the traffic vehicles, the emergency vehicles flowing smoothly right through there. With that being said, I don't believe there's any other legislation, so thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I've got a couple quick things. First thing, we have a few youth council members in the gallery here. I'd like to thank you for coming. Last year we reinstated the, as a council, we reinstated the youth council, and one of the things they wanted to do was observe how local government works, and then COVID happened. And they could not come and observe how local government works. So, I think it's great that you're coming to the meetings, and thank you for having an interest at such a young age in local government. Second thing is I was emailed, and I had a phone discussion with a local student named Nick DiVicaro. He had emailed myself, I don't know if he emailed the council members as well, and the mayor, about our city flag. Apparently he's involved in a lot of flag research, et cetera. And he approached the mayor's office, and the mayor thought his conversation was interesting, but did recommend that he approach the council. So, I had a phone conversation with Mr. DiVicaro, and he would like to come to the council and discuss our flag, potential, you know, different things we could do with maybe secondary flags, or possibly a reinvigoration of the flag dependent on the current state of the city and what's here. Councilman Williamson, I thought you would perk up to this one and be interested in what maybe he would have to say. He'd like to come talk to the council, so if we'd like at the next meeting, give him 10 minutes. Is everyone okay with that? All right, well, we'll do that, and I don't have anything else, so if anyone has a motion...
I have, I actually, can I just make an inquiry, sort of a parliamentary inquiry?
Yeah, sure.
So, since we're, since COVID is winding down and we're fairly sort of on the cusp of getting back to normal, here we are back in this room.
Sure.
What would it, could I make a simple motion to unsuspend our rules of order from the floor?
Technically, you could.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we unsuspend our rules of order. We suspended them a year plus ago because of the COVID, and now here we are back together. The mayor is clearly leaning towards opening the City Hall.
Parliamentarian-wise, if the council would like to just think about that, you could make a subsidiary motion to table that motion, so that you guys can talk about it and figure it out, but...
Why don't we wait until the mayor opens up the chambers?
Well, so here's the deal, if there's no second to the motion, the motion won't carry.
We can do that at the next council meeting, as long as the mayor opens up the chambers. We don't know what the future's going to be. As soon as he opens up the chambers, I'm pretty sure the council would open up the rest of the, our bylaws, putting them back to the table, if you don't mind. Just hold off until, yeah, you can table if you want.
So, all right, so, does someone want to second her motion?
My motion to table it?
I don't, wait a minute. That suspension came from the state, not local.
No, we suspended our rules of order.
I don't know that the state unsuspended that. So, if you're making a motion for something that isn't correct, why do it? I'll find out if that, but I'm pretty sure it's still, and that hasn't been changed.
We suspended our rules of order as a legislative act.
So, all right, so here's, Attorney Garimone does have a point. I was actually going to bring that up. But right now, as far as processing the motions, there is a motion to table the main motion until the next meeting. So is there a second to that? We have a second from DeBranco. Any opposed? All right, thank you for bringing that up, because now that we are opening back up, it would be good to get back to complete normal here, right? All right, so motion to adjourn, anyone? Okay, thank you this evening.